Okay, we welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Tuesday, March 24th, 6:30 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Chapter 38, Section 18 and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. Southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. I will call the meeting to order. All selectmen are present. In addition, we have Town Administrator Mark Purple, Assistant Town Administrator Vanessa Hale. I had asked, I'd like to start the meeting with some updates from key departments involved in this COVID-19 crisis. So Leslie Chamberlain and Paul Pazinski from the Board of Health are with us. Chief Paulus, Chief Achilles from Public Safety is here, as well as Karen Galligan from DPW. Leslie, I guess if I could have you start just to give us an update on where we stand and where you see things from a Board of Health perspective, please.
Sure. Well, I'm very pleased that things are, they seem contained. We have our second case that came forth today, but it is a family member of our first case at the same residence. So as far as positive cases, we have just those two. And we've had about 10 come and go out of the contact monitoring. At present, contact monitoring probably, let me see, it was today five. And what we do is just check in with them with their temperatures and see if they're symptomatic. And if they do become symptomatic, then they are instructed to call me and I can facilitate them, you know, with a physician or a testing site. So other than that, it's just maintaining the phone calls from the private, well, not the private schools at this time, but New England School for Autism. Been working on with Chief Achilles for supplies and some guidance. Other than that, let me think. That's about what I have. Any questions?
Leslie, this is Marty Healy. I've got a very, very quick one.
Sure.
What is the state of cooperation at the regional county or state level with, for instance, our local Board of Health?
Oh, it's been outstanding. I can call anytime, 24/7, put a call in. The epidemiologist on call calls me back. We discuss the cases that they are giving me that are positive and any other questions that I may have that dealing with with Mark and Vanessa about putting out public information, et cetera. So I have no complaints about that at all.
Okay, and I know you've been communicating with Mark about this, but, but since you've got the five of us on the line here, is there anything in the short, medium, or even long term you need from us or think you're going to need from us?
At this point, I would say no. The biggest support I have lined up for the day-to-day tasks are the school nurses that are not working. In the schools, they are ready to go should we develop more contact monitoring cases. That's the most, you know, time-consuming day-to-day task. As far as communications, I've been working very successfully with Mark and Vanessa and the Chief, Paulus and Achilles and Paul. So I'm feeling very confident about it. As you know, I am retiring and our new nurse has joined us. And she's, you know, orienting, but it's great because she works for the town of Sudbury on a very part-time basis in the Board of Health. So they're way ahead of us in terms of number of contacts and cases that they've had. So you'll be in good hands with Emily.
Okay, Brian, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I do, actually.
Yes, Lisa.
Leslie, it's Lisa. Just a quick question. There seems to be a lot of confusion, I guess, within the community. Can you kind of briefly just kind of go through the process of, you know, when you find out, you know, that we do have a positive case in town? I know there's been a lot of question as far as people that may have been in contact with that person and how that notification process happens? Did you take just a couple of seconds?
Yes. So as with any communicable disease, when the test is, is positive in any laboratory, it goes to the Department of Public Health for, you know, communicable disease surveillance. They send the test result to me through a database for just Southborough residents. So when I get the case, I go through a series of questions, ranging everything from exposure to travel history to symptoms and then into contacts. And then the contact becomes linked with that patient in my system. So now I have, for example, the first case, the mother. Now I have the daughter was a second case as a contact, but now the daughter has, is positive. So it's still all on my radar, going from contact monitoring, which is much less. That's just, do you have a fever? Do you have any symptoms? Are you staying home, et cetera? To a case which then you just case manage throughout the course of the illness and, you know, have the patient cleared with their physician. So that's, there are, there are no positive cases until DPH tells us at the local level that there is one. And that's where I think, you know, people say, oh, my neighbor, she worked at Starbucks or she worked here and, you know, she tested positive and then I was there. So now I'm a, and, you know, all of that, you just have to, just dismiss it and keep reiterating like we have on the website. There are, one, there are two specific cases that are positive.
That's perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pazinski, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to offer in addition to what Leslie's provided already?
No, I have been attempting as best I can to keep up with the webinars that the DPH, Department of Public Health at the state level in Boston have been offering on a weekly basis and also occasionally on certain days. And they also put out a lot of information that I know Chief Achilles also receives. And also from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, we get the same links. So they've been very good, the state has been very good about keeping us up to date. And I think I go into the office every day to make sure that the management of the Board of Health offices run as smoothly as possible because there are other issues that do come up besides the COVID-19. There are still people who are selling their homes, so we still have Title V issues, inspections, failures, and making sure that our sanitary inspector Dennis Costello, who's basically in the field, will conduct the inspections that are necessary for those particular systems, whether there be a failure or component repair or replacement, things of that kind, just so that people can continue to transfer a title to their property, can go get things recorded if necessary. I don't know actually what the recording process at the Registered Deeds Office is in Worcester because I know they're, they're running on a skeleton basis too. So I think everything is attempting to be done as much as possible online. But I think with the information that Leslie and Vanessa and Mark have been assisting us, our office with putting out in the way of a webpage, has helped a lot because we don't get a huge amount of calls that we did when we first started, when this issue first started. We get a few every day and there's always something, somebody will ask some question that is, obviously it's not available on the website. And Barbara Sperry, our administrative assistant, has been working from her home on occasion, on the weekends and evening to answer calls. She can dial in through the help that Tom LaFlame has set up from her house to basically field questions that maybe routine questions that come in. And then anything that can't be answered, she will post to me and I will get the answer to them. The reason I go in is making sure that there are certain things that you can only do from, limited things you can do from your house and I need to look at the files sometimes to get information. But other than that.
I lost everybody.
I'm sorry, what?
You did?
No.
Are we still there?
I think we're back now. I had a little glitch on my end, apparently. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm not sure what you heard of my little spiel about the management.
Just a little bit, just a couple of seconds. It's all good.
Yeah. I wanted, I wanted to add one more thing to Lisa's question. And this might help clarify the definition of a contact. A contact, from what we know with, with the limited science that we have on this, has been defined by the Department of Public Health as a 15-minute conversation with someone at a normal range of talking. So if somebody goes into Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, walks by someone who's positive, supposedly they don't define, they're not defined as a contact. We define a contact as someone that you live with or someone that you've had 15 minutes, you know, sitting with at a table, talking. And then one of the people tests positive, the other one's a contact. So I mean, from what we know, and we all know that there's a lot of unknowns in this. But I did want to put that out there because I think people get confused about, you know, what a contact is.
Thank you, Leslie. That's actually very, very helpful.
Yep, that is helpful.
Okay, all right. The other thing I wanted to say was, even though I'm retiring April 10th, I will absolutely be available to, you know, continue to help with Emily's, you know, transition and any extra, you know, work that she needs.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Leslie or Paul? All right, hearing none. That, thank you. You too, I guess, if you want to hang on, you're certainly welcome. Otherwise, you can sign off. Why don't we transition? Thanks. Why don't we transition next to Chief Achilles?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'll give you a couple of reports, starting with the Fire Department and then talk a little bit about emergency management. And then Chief Paulus, I'm sure we'll talk a little bit about our public safety building facility and some of the procedures we put in place. As far as the Fire Department goes, we're still maintaining all four shifts around the clock staffing. I've implemented a directive that I'm not approving any leave for, it was about a month, so till about April 20th, so that we can ensure that we have the proper staffing and reserve staffing. We're counting and leaning on our call members to be in reserve and also support our full-time staffing in the event that we need responders. We have implemented a number of policy procedures specific to the COVID pandemic, especially when it comes to patient care and how we respond to different types of calls. I can assure you that we're implementing best practices on what is known now based on CDC guidelines, as public health, what Leslie has been able to provide and also our medical control physician out of UMass. Unfortunately, these things keep on changing, so we develop and implement things and it could, I've been putting out operational updates. It almost seems like on a daily basis. We are monitoring the amount of personal protective equipment we have. We are fortunate that we have a cash through SEMA. However, that cash, we calculate out, we could, depending on the circumstances, could run through that a lot. And the inventories aren't really there to support. We can make requests and I've made some inquiries about two weeks ago to be on the list for more personal protective equipment. And we're standing by on that. We are monitoring our staff. We had three members that, we have precautionary quarantine, self-quarantine based on some circumstances with the patients that are the residents that Leslie mentioned. So that has dropped us down a little bit. We're able to manage that. I do want to reiterate that we're doing everything we can to make sure we have around-the-clock coverage for shifts. And we will implement, I've been working with the members of what plans would we have in place if we had to reduce staffing? So there, I do have some triggers and I will communicate with the chairman and also Mark Purple if we reach those triggers. Our goal is not to, but again, we want to create, maintain essential services. As far as emergency management, we have a core group of the Southborough Mercy Management that we've been communicating with. We had initial meetings some weeks ago as this was developing. I'm putting out information to them, any situation reports that we get from Mass Emergency Management or anything that may impact the larger group. We have not opened up the EOC because this is more of a non-geographic defined event. But as we move forward, we are always prepared to open up the EOC at the public safety building if possible. That's also somewhat complicated by the fact that we don't want to bring everybody in if, if at all possible. I am reporting on Web EOC. It's the situation status of our workforce. They've asked that police and fire report their available staff, not just that are affected by COVID or self-quarantines, but also people that are out on just normal extended leave are not available because that's going to impact the region and state's availability, you know, with large disasters. So that's what I have right now. I, again, I'll defer the public safety building, some of that information, Chief Paulus, and I've been working diligently to manage our facility and our staff. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Any questions for Chief Achilles?
I've got a couple, but I'm happy to let somebody else start.
Marty, go ahead.
Right. Chief, on the, for the fireside, Chief Paulus, this will be for you to think about as well. On a, on a day-to-day shift-to-shift basis, how many members of the Fire Department are actually on-site at the public safety facility?
So we have a max staffing of five that are assigned to the duty shift. And then myself, the inspectors there during the day, and I've limited the amount of hours that the administrative assistants coming to the office. It's more specific to payroll and payables. We're very fortunate. We couldn't have this new public safety building at a better time because we were able to, we have individual dorm rooms, even though they're shared over the shifts. At any one time, we're not congregating in what would be typically a, a large dormitory. We have individual rooms and we're deconning them upon getting to shift and when you leave the shift. So that's been, we're very fortunate for that. We're also limiting anybody from the outside as far as vendors, family members to come in the building. So we are, it's very difficult for a Fire Department that works in teams, that's going to have to get in ambulances and fire trucks to be socially distant. But we've implemented a lot of practice and had some practices and we've had some help from John Parent. We are probably one of the departments that's burning through a lot of disinfectant and cleaning supplies, not just for the ambulances, but the fire engines and the facilities. What's going on is to maintain that staffing.
You touched upon a key point, Chief, and that is just how fortunate we are as a community to have the new public safety facility for this pandemic. And, you know, certainly could have been a much, much more of a challenge for the staff in the, in the former facilities, both for both police and fire. So the community should commend themselves for the actions they took at the time they took to have this facility in place.
I think so. And I know Chief Paulus and I have been working on that. We have a lobby and we're able to manage the flow of people coming into the building and we have other measures planned if we have to. So we're, this has been, especially for us at 21 Main Street, would have been very hard to limit our interactions and create social distancing.
Chief, following up on the, on the staffing issue, and it's, I'm not surprised, but it's, 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 you might have heard me say that it's a good thing that, that you're going through so much sanitizing and disinfecting. I'm sure that, that people are happy to hear that. Is there enough of a sample size yet to have a sense for what, if any, impact the the COVID situation is having on response times for the Fire Department?
Right now, it's very interesting. Typically, our EMS to fire ratio of types of incidents is about 70% EMS and 30% fire. And for the last two weeks, it's kind of become even, about 50/50. We're not sure. When we thought we were down in volume until the last couple of days where yesterday we did seven calls and today they've done a number of calls. It seems that our response times are fine. Again, maintain that staffing and that's why we're trying to keep the call members in reserve. This morning, one of our units went as part of a regional task force to Northbridge for their large fire. And we were able to backfill and at this, this morning when they were gone, there was a motor vehicle accident on Route 9 and we were able to deploy in the right amount of time. This will be extremely challenging if we start. If we get down to about 15 active members that are available or less, it's going to get more and more challenging. So I'm trying to make sure we develop plans that we can maintain around-the-clock staffing and not overwhelm or overuse our available staff. So their health and well-being and their family's health and well-being is something we're taking very seriously and hopefully we don't get to a point where we have reduced staffing.
Final thing for me is, are there, are there any issues that you've encountered, again, at the, the, the regional county or state level? If members of your department need testing, that's part A, my question, and then part B, so I don't inject again, is same question I asked the, the folks from the Board of Health. Is there anything, I know you've been communicating with, with Mr. Shea and Mr. Purple, but while you've got us all here, is there anything else you need from us or anything you need to communicate to the, to the Southborough community? If you do, this is an opportunity.
Well, the first part is, we're fortunate that Shrewsbury was identified as a site for first responders and healthcare providers. They are able to test. We're sending some of our members over there this week to get tested, so hopefully we can get them back on duty quicker. I think as long as that exists and we, for our region, that will help us. We've been working really well with our neighbors, immediate neighbors, and then our mutual aid district in the state. We've been getting a lot of information, a lot of coordination. We all realize that if, if something large happens, we're going to have to go into each other's towns and help. But each town's going to have to maintain a core staff so that we don't overwhelm the bigger system. As far as the public, people in Southwood have been superb right now. It's, it's very challenging to be, increase that self-distancing and kind of self-stay-at-home. And those are very important, but I also want the public to know that if you have an emergency, please don't use this as a reason not to call us because you're worried. The providers that are going to, and professionals are going to come help you are using the right precautions. Everybody that is working is, as we know, healthy so far, so there's no risk to the public. We're also working with our medical facilities and hospitals to make sure that if you're going to go to the hospital, there's procedures that we'll put in place and they'll put in place to ensure your safety. So I want to make sure the public knows, don't hold off calling us if you need us. We'll take the right measures to make sure you're safe.
Boy, great message, Chief.
And for the Select Board, I mean, everybody's been very supportive. I'm very impressed with the level of coordination and cooperation in the town. I think the, the thing that we're, we're, we're tracking with finance, sort of track any expenditures that are related to this response. So you'll probably see later on that we will have maybe a little higher expenditures and that may go up if we have staffing issues or have significant issues with personal protective equipment. Those are the areas that we seem to be starting to spend a little bit extra resources and funds on just to ensure that we're available.
Chief, this is Sam. Couple of questions, if I may. Good point about the tracking expenses. I think I've been reading that there's opportunity potentially to get federal or state funding to reimburse us for extraordinary expenses. So the better we can track that, better record we have. I think that puts us in a good position. You touched on the staffing issue. I don't know how many folks saw it, but Rush Representative Dyke sent around an update today talking about a bill that's going through the House that gives towns more flexibility in terms of responding to this issue. And one of the components of that is the ability to recall retired town, if it, town staff to serve for an interim period of time here. I'm curious, do we have any reserve capacity there in terms of members of the Fire Department or Police Department who have retired, who might be available to help fill in, should we reach a situation that you described where a number of folks are impacted and quarantined and you've got a staffing pressure there? Is that a possibility for us?
So we are managing and reaching out to make sure we have lists of members of the department that used to work as firefighters and EMTs. We also have a very robust, and Lisa may be able to add to this, a very robust CERT team. And the Office of Emergency Management has provided some leeway and leverage and we're seeking additional leverage at the state level through the Fire Chiefs of Mass, Association of Massachusetts, that really if we, if we needed non-medical or limited medical providers to drive the ambulance or support staff, we would be able to use them without impacting our licensure with the state. So there are measures in place and we're going to consistently monitor them. My goal, because we have a number of paramedics, is to maintain as many paramedics as possible. And that becomes a little more challenging if you're not currently a paramedic or licensed at that level to provide that level of skill. There's really no, can't really waive that. And you guys are fortunate, you have a paramedic as a fire chief and I hope it doesn't come to it, but I will, staff is as needed.
Good to have the reserve capacity potentially then. That's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Have a question, Lisa?
Thank you. So Chief, I'm going to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Selectman Healy said. So have you seen an increase in, in calls and mutual aid calls for flu-related? Or it's just minimal at this point, based on your normal?
Yeah, I'd say we're still providing mutual aid at the same level and we're receiving mutual aid at the same level. Yeah, I'd say we're still providing mutual aid at the same level and we're receiving mutual aid at the same level. Where again, the towns that we count on around us are managing. They're all experiencing some level of staff impacts. But I know a number of them have implemented very similar measures that we have. So we ensure essential staffing and providing minimal services. I will also add that we do have a prevention officer that is a lieutenant and a paramedic. And we're prepared, he's supporting on-duty staffing. And if we were some reason to get down, he would be transferred or temporarily transferred back to shift. So again, we have a pretty good level of capacity right now. I think we have our fingers crossed and kind of watching what's happening regionally. And hopefully other communities don't start experiencing a high level or we don't experience a high level.
Okay, thank you. And just please share with, with your department, you know, our thanks for all the extra work that they're doing and, and, you know, still coming in during this tough time. So please thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Chief Achilles before we go to Chief Paulus? All right, Chief Paulus, I guess if you could pick up on where Chief Achilles was referring to?
Sure, I'll touch on a lot of the same topics, but we're very lucky right now, we're fully operational. We have had a couple of staffing issues with officers who had traveled out of the country in the last few weeks. But we expect them back, one at the end of the week and one next week. That's been offset by the staff is taking very limited amount of time off now. So we haven't seen a, a problem in staffing, any of the shifts. Also like to take this time just to, you know, give a shout out to all the offices and the staff. They realize how serious this issue is. And they've literally been, been, been bombarded with special orders, policies, updates on policies, directives from the court, the bail, public health, and they've just taken it in stride. And just really proud of the staff, everybody's been working together.
And I would just note one thing as well, in this whole time period over the last two weeks, crime has certainly not taken a break. It is not experiencing social distancing, having seen some of the activities that your, your, your staff have been involved with.
Yeah, and, and the staff is very responsive to that. And although you might see maybe a little less visibility in us doing what you're used to seeing us doing, which is, you know, maybe a heavy traffic presence or some quality of life issues. We're still out patrolling everywhere and, you know, trying to keep the public safe. And in one of the instances, you know, we were helped out, we thought the situation had ended, but an alert citizen had seen one of the juveniles involved in a neighbor's car. And they, they called us and it, it helped us wrap that whole thing up. So yeah, it's always a partnership between the police and the public. And, you know, just gonna reiterate that, you know, call in, you might not get the usual response time or the usual set of circumstances. You're used to getting a face-to-face interaction with a police officer, but we're certainly gonna address everything. So certainly call us, you will get a return call and a follow-up on, on any situation involving public safety in the town.
Hey Chief, following up just very quickly on that, are you doing a, a, a different sort of screening for calls? In other words, not going out in some instances when you would have in previous instances? And is, is that a bright line rule if you are, or is it, is there flexibility involved?
Yeah, anything that wouldn't be an emergency, we're trying to handle it over the phone. But even, you know, we certainly were first responders, we go to medical calls. So we've been working with Chief Achilles and the fire department, trying to screen those calls. We might be in the area, but they would go in first. Certainly if it was an emergency response that needed a D-Fib or NACAN or something like that, we would try to put on our PPE equipment first and go right in. But yeah, we are trying to do some additional, additional screening where we don't have the face-to-face contact, if possible. But we all realize, you know, we took the oath and we're in this profession, so we do what we have to do. But like I said, everybody's trained, we have some amount of PPE equipment. And it's pretty much business as usual for us, except for what we mentioned, screening the calls and just trying to be as safe as possible.
Have there been any issues with incarceration?
Yeah, we've had a few arrests. And something that I wanted to bring up is get a lot of support from the Mass Chiefs of Police Association. And they put out a model policy which we tailored to our needs. And it's procedures and protocol in a declaration of a pandemic health emergency. So it covers all our operating procedures. And one of them would be prisoner screening. So we would ask a series of questions before we even brought them into the building. And if we thought that there was a health issue, then we would defer. Also, Tom LaFlem helped us out greatly. One of the first things the courts did, they really don't want anybody up there right now. So we're doing all our bail hearings, arraignments, they're all doing, being done much like this is through an iPad and video. And just working on having as little time in the station for those people as, as possible. Unless it's something really serious, you know, everybody's getting released with another court date to appear. So that policy and procedure that the Chiefs Association put out, it's just been fantastic in directing us where to go.
Great, thank you.
All right, if I may?
Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. Hi, Chief, welcome. Just a couple of quick, just a couple of quick things for you. Is the clinician still doing ride-alongs with you at this time, or has that ceased?
She was up until last week, it's funny you say that. She was working in another town and she actually came in contact with somebody. So she's gonna be out of the, out of service for about two weeks. However, we do have backup from her agency, the Advocates Group. And we would, at this point, we're gonna call them if we need them. So I think like Chief Achilles said, even all the, the border towns who were all gonna rely on each other for backup and for support, it's affecting each one a little bit. And we just hope it, it doesn't get any further than that, but we're all prepared to help each other out.
Okay, and just one, one last question have, and it's kind of similar to what I had asked Chief Achilles. But have you seen through your officers, a uptick in any way of whether that be domestic or maybe mental health or just seeming, the, the public is seeming to be a little more stressed about what's going on? And people are a little bit more on edge? Have you seen that at all, or is everything kind of on an even keel at this point?
I think given the circumstances, especially, you know, just watch the news, that'll, you know, put you on edge a little bit. But no, we really haven't seen an uptick, an uptick. And then also even in, we had a little bit of an increase in crime that, you know, would make the press. So that kind of comes and goes in Southborough. But no, we haven't seen anything yet, everybody's been really cooperative or contacting us through email or the phone. So they understand that there's a different set, set of operating procedures. And no, we haven't really seen anything.
Okay, that's good news. And please share with your officers our thanks as well.
Oh, one thing that I did want to bring up, I have it in my notes here, I know it's, it, it's a topic. And, you know, you're seeing groups gathering on playing fields and parks in the community. And we're doing the best we can. I did reach out yesterday to rec and the schools to maybe put up a little more signage. And we put some police tape around some of the playgrounds. And then we're also gonna work on securing some of the nets on all these fields. So it doesn't make it as attractive for people to go on. And that's just gonna be a work in progress as we move forward.
Well, thanks for mentioning that, Chief. And again, I guess I would just issue another appeal to everybody who may be watching this, just to take seriously the guidelines and precautions that are in place. I know the schools issued guidance earlier this week that is now posted on the town website as well, that I think is very, very excellent and clear guidance on procedures. And that, you know, really everybody needs to take and, you know, all ages. And that includes keeping, you know, keeping your families away from playgrounds and away from, and away from the fields. And it shouldn't just have to fall upon the police to enforce this. I just would hope that parents and families at home take the, the extra step to ensure that, you know, they don't put the police in a situation where they have to be the ones to, to approach people who are in the fields. I hope that, you know, everybody can take this seriously. It's an inconvenience to everybody. And, you know, the more thoroughly everybody follows the procedures and the guidelines, the quicker we're gonna be past this and the quicker we'll be able to return to life as normal. But, you know, we've got to mitigate the spread. And it's, it's just key to, to follow the guidelines that are in place, so. Any other questions for Chief Paulus? Okay, with that, Chief Achilles, Chief Paulus, thank you. Karen, from DPW perspective, how's, how's everything going with your department?
We haven't had too, I mean, pandemic is not really a DPW issue, thankfully. So as far as emergencies, it, it, it doesn't really call us in as, as would most things that would call an EOC up. We have, we did, because Chief Paulus had sent something, obviously we, anything to do with rec has to do with us too, because the asset is taken care of by us. We secured stuff, we put the sign up at the, at the transfer station, just letting people know the fields are closed. Like to some degree, there's a good chance people hadn't thought of that. Like, you know, the average person just doesn't necessarily think, well, why, why, why couldn't I go to the field? If you're keeping six feet apart and everything, you know, I think our worst place right now is the grocery store to be with people. But, um, yeah, as far as our operations, nothing's changed, except we had to, we did close the swap shop down. Cause that's kind of a tight space, but most of our operations, our people are automatically distanced from each other. I mean, they're not eating in the same lunchroom or, I mean, they're keeping separated. So we have different lunchrooms going, but there's only a couple of people in each area eating. We are not the receivers of all the hand sanitizers, wipes and Lysol, because most of that really has to stay with the public safety building. So, um, you know, we're doing the best we can with what we have. But generally, everybody's just doing what they can for social distancing. And, you know, the department, it's actually with no traffic and no kids on the fields and stuff. We're, we're actually get, being able to get a lot done.
Good, good. And no issues with, you know, certainly providing water, providing the basics. I think it's important to keep the transfer station open. So people, there's a large number of residents in town that use that to dispose of trash. I think that's key to keep open so that that process can continue. Hopefully folks just, you know, don't linger and spend as much time there as they might normally do. But again, I think it's just important to make sure that the key DPW functions are, are maintained through this.
Yeah, and as far as the transfer goes, I mean, except for people still trying to get signatures for things, which I wish they wouldn't, they are, when they are up there, they actually, maybe they won't be up there anymore. But they're, they have been kind of trying to leave the clipboard somewhere so that people will go and take it. But they're all touching the same clipboard and the pen. But I, I don't, I don't know how that works. After listening to Leslie, it seems like that's probably not as big a deal anyway. So I think keeping the normalcy that the transfer station has and, and is, is actually probably important and probably kind of helpful for people because this is isolating. And I mean, I'm able to go to work and I still think it feels isolating. So I can't imagine what the average resident feels like if they're, if they're kind of at home with their children or without children. And then also, as far as water goes, that's, that's status quo. We, there, there haven't been any, like no regulation changes or any kind of, um, anything that's really changed as far as our testing or sampling that, that's allowed by DEP based on this. I think making sure people feel confident in the water supply is really important at a time like this. So the DEP is holding fast to all the same standards and testing and sampling and everything else that we normally do.
Good.
Hey Karen, my, my, my antenna went up just a second ago when you, when, it, it sounded like you said there might be an issue about sanitizers for you folks. Is that, did I hear that correctly or?
So yes, we don't, because for us, we, we did get some Lysol now, but we don't have, we, we haven't been able to get ahold of any Clorox wipes, the same thing. Like we order stuff, but we're not getting it any more than anyone, like a resident can, can get it through when they're trying. And they really have to keep wiping down at the police and fire station. And they get, they have the cleaning company come and stuff. And so we're, we're outside mostly and like the, you know, fine, we're not necessarily being able to wipe down like the seats and the steering wheel of the truck. But generally the same people are in the truck each day. So people don't seem to have a ton of concern. I mean, we got Lysol sprayed today, so that was good, so we could spray stuff down. But, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not the same because we're not in living quarters with, with anybody. And we're really not, we're, we're, we're outside more than we're ever inside.
Mark, I guess I'll, I'll direct this to you. Can you get that on the front burner? I mean, that, that, it just strikes me that, that, you know, employees of town going to work, that should not be an issue for them. And, and we should figure out a way to deal with that.
Yeah, we'll make sure we, you know, we stay on top of that, Marty. You know, the priority, you know, the priority has been public safety. I know that, you know, when we get things in, Karen, that, you know, they did bring some supply, you know, some supplies down today. And I know that, you know, every day John tells me about, you know, the backlog. You know, sometimes it's been three to four weeks before things we've requested were actually receiving. But we'll stay on top of that and make sure that, that people get what they need.
Right, because it's not just us, Town Hall, Town Hall needs stuff too. I mean, all the different departments, right now the priority has to be police and fire.
No, I get that, but you folks, yeah, I agree, they should be the priority, but you, they should be priority A. You guys should be priority A1. So, you know, we should, anyway, it sounds like Mark is, is gonna be on top of that, so. And the final thing is Karen, you won't be surprised by my question. Are, are, are large projects in the town gonna be going forward at some point? Or are those on hold, specifically having to do with Main Street?
Gee, I hadn't anticipated that coming from you, Marty. No, I, I just spoke to the contractor today just to clarify and make sure. And their plan was to come in the end of April, that is still their plan. The DOT has not changed that construction at this point still, which obviously, I guess the word fluid seems to be the word of the, the epidemic or pandemic, whatever it is, is that construction can still go forward. You know, I think it kind of lends itself to the social distancing. So their plan is to still come in the end of April and get started. We've been encouraging and I will say that I believe the, the Selectman, I'm sorry, we probably need to get on the backs of Verizon a little bit to, to get, to get the, the, the wires moved. Because there's a good chance that those poles just, they're, they're moving, they're very slowly getting the, these, the bottom wires off. Like the electric company came and did, they, they, they put the poles in. But now we're into the communications pieces. I think we might have something up there of our own also. So that, when, we need to kind of, just kind of put some pressure onto, onto that. And also, we've been talking to Rotary a little bit. And I do think with the spring cleanup, we usually do that every year. And again, that's another thing that lends itself to social distancing. So we were, we're looking at a way that we can still do it where people just can kind of not come in contact with each other to, to make that happen.
Karen, I'm sorry, Sam, good?
Karen, a question, follow on to the construction, Main Street construction process.
Yep.
Given the long, longer-term weather forecast that I've seen for the next several weeks look pretty favorable. And given that we have a perfect opportunity for a very
Um, and given that we have a perfect opportunity for very limited traffic in town for the next month here, is there any possibility that the Main Street construction people can accelerate that process a little bit? Get a head start at a time when they would inconvenience far fewer people, because there are so many fewer people on the roads these days?
Um, trust me, they would love to, but, um, they also, they lay their people off for a certain amount of months over the winter. And until everybody reconvenes up, they're, they're, which is the end of April for them. So they don't, they, they don't have crews available at this point.
Too bad, thanks.
Go ahead, Dan.
Sam, it won't surprise you that, uh, that was, once, once again, you and I are on the exact same page. My exact question.
Sorry.
Start with you for asking that.
Yeah, very good. Uh, well, you know, that's a, you know, while that's a good point, that's, it's inevitable that there will be the need for details on that work as well. And that could be another strain on public safety resources, so we just need to keep that in mind also, so. Uh, any other questions for Karen?
Thanks, Karen.
All right, Karen.
Good night, guys. Thank you, Karen. Bye.
All right, um, I appreciate the updates from everybody. Continuing on our agenda, consent agenda. First item is approve the local declaration of emergency. We discussed this at our last meeting. So like, and Healy, you were going to follow up with, um, Town Council, Mr. Cipriano, to go through some questions that you had. We've since had circulated around an updated version of that declaration. Is that satisfy the questions that you had?
Um, it did, and I'll, I'll just, just because folks heard, heard the questions, I, I had back and forth with, um, Mr. Cipriano, very helpful. Um, and I, I guess two things, number one, the statutory, um, authority is, um, it's a little bit squishy. Um, in that it, it, it doesn't contemplate a situation like this, but it's solid in terms of giving the town the authority to take the action. That's number one. Um, and number two, and this goes to the, to the, um, the very limited amended language, um, in the, in the last version that Mr. Purple sent out. And that is just clarifying that, um, there are, um, the emergency declaration carries with it, obviously, the recognition that there might be, um, emergency procedures, emergency decisions that have to be made, whether on a, on a short, medium, or even long term. And that the authority for those actions, um, is and remains with the, the, uh, the Board of Selectment. I'm comfortable with that language, Mr. Cipriano is comfortable with that language. Um, I talked to Mr. Purple about it as well, and I think, Mark, you're comfortable with it as well?
So moved.
And, and Marty, that actually addresses my main concern about the prior draft as well. That insertion of the clause, the consent of the selectmen, I think is the appropriate check and balance.
And I would move that we, uh, vote to approve the declaration as provided.
Second.
Who's seconded? All those in favor?
Alenda.
Question.
I'm going to say that's a roll call unanimous aye, is my determination. Uh, next item under consent agenda is approve open session minutes from March 19th, 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any comments, discussion? All those in favor? Shay aye.
Shay aye.
Healy aye.
That's again, roll call unanimous. Uh, update on the impact of COVID-19, so other discussion items.
Karen, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Wanted to, so I, um, we had a department head meeting earlier today, um, much like this. We had 22 people, um, it was Uber Brady Bunch. Uh, it was, it was really kind of neat to do this, but, and I'm not going to rehash, uh, everything, because every department updated as to where they are, how they're dealing with things in, in this, this new normal that we have. But, um, I, I guess the overarching theme is, is, you know, you should be, you know, very proud of the people that you've got staffing your departments, you know, who really have, you know, adjusted and readjusted on the fly, you know, with, with everything that's being thrown at them, and continuing to try to find ways to, to deliver good customer service, while at the same time trying to, you know, to, um, um, you know, protect the people that, that work for them and work in our offices. Everybody took about five, seven minutes, went through, talked about what they're doing with their departments. I'm not going to go through everything, um, but there were some, um, some notable things that, again, you don't think of, but they do. And that's, and that's why, you know, we're glad that we have them. The, 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 the one that struck me the most, I think, was Brian Sterns, our veterans' agent. Um, and Brian, um, you know, has been, um, you know, making sure that, you know, um, for these claims processes, you know, he has an all electronic process now, so that you don't have to, you know, you can take care of this all electronically for the veterans. He helps walks them through it, and VA is still processing claims, the appeals have, you know, period has been relaxed. Um, and, and that is working well, but Brian was really looking ahead, um, in terms of getting his clients paid the benefits that they deserve. There was big concern from some of the veterans that they weren't going to get their April checks with everything going on. Brian made sure that that got taken care of and processed ahead of time, so that, so that those veterans aren't going to have to worry about not having that, not having those funds. So he was, you know, forward thinking on that and, and, um, you know, really appreciate that. Building Department, they've been limiting their inspections. Lori is going out and doing them Tuesday and Thursday, she's been flexing out her staff. A lot of the program, because we have the online permitting program, a lot of that can be handled remotely, just as effectively as it is at home. Or, I mean, by being right in the office. And also, um, it's a, it's a good time, some of the staff, uh, it's been a little bit slow with zoning at this point. Been scanning, uh, some of the old building plans that we have down in the basement. So they've been coming, uh, having facilities grab a set in the townhouse in the basement, bringing them over, scanning them, getting them electronic, so that, God forbid, you know, we ever get water in that basement again, we don't end up losing some of those files. Senior Center, uh, you know, Pam, um, her staff is all working remotely. They are probably one of the best prepared departments for something like this, because they already know, they have lists, they have, you know, files on who their vulnerable, uh, population is, who are the seniors that are vulnerable. They've been doing outreach to them, they've been sending out cards, uh, personal cards to the, some of the isolated seniors, just to, you know, um, keep tabs and, and make them, you know, feel good. Meals on Wheels is being done by Bay Path, that is continuing. That's, you know, th, those were just a couple of things. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a flavor, you've heard from, from Police and Fire and DPW, and those are the big ones. But, but this is just a flavor of some of the other departments. Youth and Family Services, you know, they're handling all of their clients and everything in that remote and online at this point. Um, and of course, during this time, there's still people who want to participate and, and, and get services online. And Sarah said today at the meeting, if we go back to, you know, being back in the offices and seeing people live, she says, we could never accommodate all these people, uh, you know, so, um, you know, but, but it's been, it's been great. So, um, bottom line, people are continuing to be served, people are continuing to be taken care of. So despite everything that's going on, uh, you know, I still think that the departments are doing a good job.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, for those watching the meeting, I would just note that, uh, Mr. Hegarty has joined us. I did ask him to, uh, participate in the last item that I wanted to discuss, which is the municipal election. But before we get to that, um, are there any other items that folks have? Ms. Brascio, you had indicated.
I do, thank you. Um, so I have, um, been in touch, I guess a few of the seniors had reached out to me. I, I also wanted to reiterate that Breakneck Hill is open, the Beals Preserve is still open, and the Town Forest is still open, if people want to walk there. And, uh, people are taking advantage of that, and they seem to be using their social distancing. All of those places seem to be relatively good for families, and it's worked out rather well. But I had been approached by a few seniors that, um, obviously the most vulnerable population. And prior to this, the seniors, um, had been working with the schools and been able to go to the track at, at Trotter. And they would go from seven to eight in the morning and whatnot. Um, so I had been approached about if the board would consider possibly having a conversation with the school, and about possibly designating a couple of days a week even, some hours, that it would be only for 65, 60 over, you know, for our vulnerable population to be get out. Some of these people aren't having their physical therapy appointments that they had, so this is the opportunity. And what they're doing now, because they don't have access to the track, which is level, they're going in the cemetery. And anybody that's walked the cemetery knows, it's, it's not the most level of, of, um, walking surface. So I had asked Mr. Purple if he, again, I don't even know if this is feasible, or the board would consider this.
So, one thing that I'll just point out, and I had looked up the, um, the actual executive order that the governor had passed yesterday. And there's three sections to that. First is the maintaining of essential services workforces. Section two addresses temporary closing of other businesses and organizations. And three is limitations on gatherings. And under the limitations on gatherings, there's a statement that says, this order does not prohibit gatherings of more than 10 people in an unenclosed outdoor space such as a park, athletic field, or parking lot. So it would certainly seem to me that a track, which is certainly unenclosed and it's outdoors, that that would almost be exempt from that limitations on gathering section of the executive order. And I know that there were questions raised about actions that the trustees took with respect to, um, some lands in town, and which raised questions then on the trails, as, as you had mentioned. And it just seems to me that anything that's, that is outdoors, that is unenclosed, that, you know, certainly where social distancing can be maintained, that we ought to allow and encourage that for, again, as long as people are following the, the distancing guidelines that, that are in place, so. I don't know how others feel about that.
I agree.
I agree.
Brian, I'll just chime in if I may, I mean, I, I feel good about it. I, I wouldn't limit to just those, uh, in a certain age population. But then you know what's going to happen, um, which I am also, you know, we could also discuss, but the same thing is going to happen for those that say, well, you're allowing, uh, people to walk on tracks, but you're not allowing groups of less than 10 to kick a soccer ball, or?
Well, that's, that's not true, Dan, because the executive order then continues to say, athletic and recreational activities that bring participants into close physical contact are prohibited, even when involving 10 or fewer people, regardless of where conducted. So they're, you know, they're really, you know, intent on, on keeping that separation from people. And again, I think at an outdoor track, along the trails, I think that people can be smart and use their best judgment and, and provide that, that separation.
Okay, so let, let me, that, now, now, now I'll get on a roll a little bit.
All right, here we go.
All right, so, so back to your baseball analogy before, when kids throw a baseball, uh, they're, uh, you know, they're not standing right next to each other to throw a baseball, or to, or to toss a frisbee. And are we going to allow kids to toss a baseball, provided, again, there's fewer than 10, and they are not congregated right around each other?
So I guess, what, Dan, my, my reaction to that is, is that, um, um, it's impossible to address everything, that there's a real slippery slope with, um, um, any sort of organized athletic activity. Uh, I, I mean, if, if, if you open the door a crack for, um, you know, a couple of kids playing catch, all of a sudden you got somebody with a bat in their hand, and, and again, there's, I, I think there's a real concern with a slippery slope. A track is different, and I, and I really don't think that, 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 um, um, allowing, I, I, Lisa, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be more, um, open than, than just a few hours a day, that, that allowing walking and jogging on, on the track is, is, doesn't violate the terms of the governor's off, um, um, order, and is, uh, you know, a perfectly reasonable request to make of the, uh, of the schools.
And I think that's consistent as well with the guidance that Leslie gave at the start of this meeting on what they term contact. You know, certainly, you know, passing by somebody on the, on the tracks six feet away is not engaging in somebody for 15 minutes, so.
My, 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 my recreation of choice during this period is, is Hoppington State Park, you know, with trails and open spaces and everything like that. And, and this past weekend, the, the parking lot was packed, um, but there was almost across the board, social distancing. I don't think there was a group of more than four that I saw the entire time. So, you know, if you're, particularly if you're a responsible adult, or if you're, if your kids who are being accompanied by, by a responsible adult, you know, jeez, get outside, um, and just be, be mindful of the social distancing requirements.
So Marty, everything you said also can apply to kids with an adult who want to toss a baseball, or toss a frisbee?
Uh, Dan, I hear you, I just think that the, the slippery slope for that, I don't think we have to solve every problem in the world. And I, I think the, 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 the issue of, of folks being able to walk and jog at, at Trotter can be addressed without having to, to, to think that we're somehow being biased against, um, you know, nine-year-olds who want to throw a baseball. I, I, I.
Well, I, I will, I will submit, that's exactly what you're doing. But I am, I am clearly entirely in favor of opening up the track for people who want to jog. There are others who want to be able to exercise as well and maintain that social distancing, which is, you know, right, you know, straight in, in, in line with what the governor put out. What I'm suggesting is, is why can't we put something out there that is more universal than just the track? You know, to the extent that, um, it, people in, in groups of 10 or less, in a, not a confined, uh, you know, arrangement, want to be able to exercise in a, in, in a manner of their choice, um, they should be allowed to do that. That's clearly what the governor is allowing.
Yeah, I, I agree with Marty, I think it's a slippery slope, it's easy to draw a fairly clear line for people, as Marty has suggested there. I think it's also important to reinforce Brian's point that, uh, I think the trails are an important recreational asset that can be enjoyed safely and consistent with the, uh, public health guidelines. And I've had people ask me, are the trails closed? There's some confusion about that. I think they ought to be open, and we ought to clarify what our intent is around that, so.
So if the track at Trot, if this is solely about the track at Trotter, then are we saying again, that only people who wish to walk or jog can use the, the track at Trotter? No one else can use the in, the interior of the track to do anything at all? You know, again, if they are in line with exactly what the governor has prescribed, are we saying they are not allowed to do that on the track? They are only allowed to use the, the, the track itself, but not the interior of it?
And again, let me just reiterate, this, this was a request that came from some seniors that want to go out and be able to walk. We know there's a sidewalk issue in town. They didn't feel comfortable being one of the vulnerable population, that all the data has shown. They weren't comfortable going to Breakneck Hill, they weren't comfortable, they're trying to find an alternative place that they can still exercise. Families and everybody else can still utilize Breakneck Hill, the Town Forest, the Beals Preserve. There are opportunities out there, but, but what, what I was specifically asking for was just something for designated for the seniors, so they have a place to go and they can feel safe. And, and we have a large population of seniors, and, and that's what I was asking for. I, I did not intend to get into a debate about, you know, wasn't my intent. And Dan, I, I completely see where you're, you're coming from, it's almost like segregating a group. But, again, this is a vulnerable group, and they're asking for our help in giving them a safe opportunity and a chance to get out and exercise and walk.
So, let me make sure, let me make sure I understand exactly what Lisa's asking for then, or at least, uh, because I agree that, that, that they should be able to utilize the track. I think that's a great thing, it's, it's completely in line with what the governor has prescribed. Uh, Mike, I guess my question is, are you asking that this board limited, though, the track to only seniors?
Potentially, Dan, like the grocery stores during certain hours then, if we want to open it up to everybody, that's fine. Potentially, Dan, like the grocery stores during certain hours, then. If we want to open it up to everybody, that's fine. But, you know, even your grocery stores are opening early, so the seniors have an opportunity to come in and not be, you know, within a crowd.
Some are, some are.
The difference there, though, Lisa, is that is an enclosed indoor space. You know, we're not in a field, the track, the trails is unenclosed outdoor. Personally, I think we're making this a whole lot more complicated than we have to. I think the governor's executive order is pretty clear that, you know, if you're in a park, an athletic field, a parking lot, that it's unenclosed and outdoors, the limitations on gatherings does not apply.
So we should, I think we should put out exactly that.
Pardon me?
I think we should put out exactly that and make sure that the residents of Southborough know exactly what the governor's prescribed in terms of outdoor recreation.
Yep, yeah. And athletic and recreational activities that bring participants into close physical contact are prohibited, even when involving ten or fewer people.
Right, the two have to go together.
That's the governor's order, so.
Okay, then let me ask Mark then, do we need to get, because that's on school property, does the school have to weigh in because they have closed their facilities on the track specifically? I get everything else, all the fields that, you know, we're in control of, but are the schools different?
Yes, so we need to have that conversation with the superintendent. Lisa spoke to me about this earlier. I gave superintendent Mark Noah a quick call. He said he's open to the discussion, and he, you know, thinks it would be a good thing. He just wants to make sure his two concerns were people bringing dogs into, walking the dogs in the track, which, and leaving behind presents. And also that it would, and I don't want to prolong the discussion, but leading to groups of people which may be, you know, using the area for, other than walking and everything, and maybe getting into some of these athletic events, you know, participating in close contact type of thing. So those were his only two concerns. He said he'd be willing to have further discussions about that, depending if the board was favorable on that.
All right. I would move that the board request of the superintendent of schools, that the Trotter track be allowed for use for walkers and joggers, particularly members of our senior community. That's my motion.
I'll amend that to say, consistent with the governor's executive orders?
Accept the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. So, so hold on. All right, has that been seconded for discussion?
Yes. So it's moved and seconded, correct?
We're discussing.
All right, go ahead, Dan.
All right, so that sounds incredibly limiting, though. And it does not sound like it's in line with the governor's intent.
No, it's got, it is a specific request to the superintendent of schools for one facility, period. I don't want to go beyond that.
But let me, I don't understand why not. If the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has already prescribed what is allowed for recreation, why does that not apply to the small town of Southborough?
I didn't say it didn't apply. My motion is very specific, Dan.
It's incredibly limiting to a one track, to one track, to a, you know, to a subset of our community.
So, as it stands now, Dan, the superintendent has closed the track. So this motion is an appeal to the superintendent to allow access to the track, consistent with the governor's executive order.
Right. The governor should have put out that, you know, an exemption for school tracks. I mean, did not do that. So if the superintendent wants to open up every property to allow for groups of ten or less, not confined, not, you know, not having, not sports where they would be together, to allow them to also be able to get some form of recreation while this event is going on, why shouldn't everyone from our community know of the governor's stated prohibitions and what is allowed? And then ask the superintendent to look into all of that, not just one particular track for one subset of our community?
I'm not changing my motion.
And I can't, while I support what Lisa is asking, I will not vote in favor of that motion. That is, I think, is incredibly limiting and does an injustice, literally, to everyone else in the community who also would want to have some form of recreation while this event is going on.
Got it.
Let's vote.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Shayye?
Heelyye.
Rassle.
I.
All those opposed?
No.
Glenn doesn't know. Pass this.
Brian?
Sam.
Can I suggest that we, in one of our updates to the public generally, that we clarify, reinforce the governor's policy on this, to make it clear to people that trails and other similar unconstrained outdoor spaces are available, subject to what the governor said about groups.
Yeah, I mean, let's put the governor's executive order on our website as what our update.
Just to clarify for people, I've had people ask me, they're confused, and some of them think trails are closed and so forth, so I think it's good to clarify.
Good idea. So.
Can I hit another third rail, Mark, for you?
Yeah, well, wait, can I, let's close this third rail first. So we did not find out until very late this afternoon about the second positive, so I'll be sending out a new public update tomorrow. I'll include this about making sure that clarification is made for the trails and things like that, so people are aware that 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 does not carry the same restriction.
Okay. Thank you. So back to the governor's order on essential services and workforces and closing of other businesses and organizations. Has New England Golf given any indication as to whether they're complying with this?
I would assume that they would be. I think the snow took care of it today. But I do, I have a call I need to return to Bill Harrison, which I believe they should be considered probably non-essential. But I do not, I don't know how they're viewing it. I'll get feedback from him, and I can report back to the board on that. So that's not as much of a third rail as you think.
Okay. One more thing that I had, and I'll see if others have anything. Hang on, sorry. Oh, lastly, there was a request by the chair of our Trails Committee to consider the use of other technology besides Zoom for meetings of boards and committees, and whether we should be limiting boards and committees to using Zoom, which is the platform that the town invested in. The limitation there is that it can only be two consecutive meetings, or two meetings at the same time. If others from other committees have, you know, abilities to host a similar type of meeting to this, using a different type of platform, is that something that we would consider, should we limit it this time to Zoom? I was just curious what others thought about that.
Why limit, as long as we can record and post those meetings appropriately to provide transparency in terms of the process?
It seemed to me that, you know, the town site that has the YouTube channel should be the repository for all the meetings, just so people don't have to search, you know, five or six different websites, five or six different locations to be able to find the meetings. They should all be in one location.
Right.
But, you know, certainly if, you know, all the the end result from a different platform can achieve the same thing that Zoom does.
Yeah, all of these.
That as well.
Create a video file that you can actually get into YouTube.
Is the easiest way to deal with that, just give Tom the ability to sign off on it? And if it meets the requirements, and he signs off on it, then it's okay?
Well, you know, and I know Tom's still here, and I'm not sure, you know, Tom's ready to chime in on this, but we had a brief discussion about it earlier, and if we're putting together this platform and understanding how it works and making sure that it can do what we need and satisfies what, you know, you know, it meets all the open meeting law criteria and these new change things, I think it would be better and safer if we all stuck with one thing. The one thing you have to remember is, doing a meeting like this, you know, Marty could be sitting in his office, and you could do this meeting at ten in the morning. You're not confined to, when is the meeting room open? When are those things open? So I'm not sure the fact that you can simply run, you know, one meeting at a time or two meetings at a time is really as important, you know, as it is if, in fact, you need a physical space. And you don't need a physical space. So, you know, I think we should keep everybody to the same platform until, you know, until we determine that, you know, that there's an issue that we need to consider, whether we add another room or whether we open it up to outside things. But but that puts another level on Tom's plate to make sure that all of those things can be carried consistently to the YouTube site.
Mark, can I just ask if, is this the platform, Zoom, is Zoom the platform that Tom's looking at to be able to work with public comment on?
Yes. And Tom, actually, Zoom is the platform that seems everybody is looking at, Lisa, with regards to, you know, whether it's college professors, whether it's high school, going to this whole online learning. But Tom has upgraded us to have that ability. I just need to understand it with him now and do some walkthrough. Vanessa participated in a call, a Zoom meeting like this with Mass Municipal Association the other day, and they had that capability, you know, where you could do Q and A, where you could, you know, be a person who was able to come into the meeting. So in expanded capacity, you can have, say, a hundred people who are able to watch the meeting and not participate. And then at the same time, you've got more than this group, up to a hundred people, that can participate, just like we're participating now. And you can toggle back and forth between someone who is not able to chime in, you can bring them into the meeting to speak, then you can put them back, you know, into the audience, so to speak. So I don't want to, I don't want to roll something out or ask you to roll something out and expand the who can have meetings now and that, until Tom is fully comfortable, you know, how we're going to do and what we're going to do, and be able to set up scripts, so to speak, that people can just take and go through and, you know, and run meetings.
Mark, does the upgrade that you mentioned include the capability at some point to have more than two simultaneous meetings? Is that something that we can do fairly soon? Because if we can provide that capacity, then there really shouldn't be an issue to allow other technologies.
So, Tom, I think you may want to jump in.
Good evening.
I tried, Tom.
No, that's fine. Okay, so we can certainly up the number of meetings that we can have at a given time. The biggest challenge with that is then also managing the recording of it and any live streams that we're going to try to do. So there's a lot of moving pieces, from my understanding and the discussions that I've had with Mark and with Jim, about the requirements that the governor's order allowing us to hold this meeting tonight put in place. So I think that we can get around it, but I, Mark basically hit everything that I was saying earlier, which is, you know, let's master one platform. And I think that makes it actually a lot easier for the residents to have access to all these meetings. And to Mark's point, you know, we can schedule meetings all day long, you know, so yes, there might be a time that advisory wants to meet at the same time as selectmen, but maybe there's some compromise there, and one goes a little earlier than normal and one goes a little later. So I would ask at this time that you keep it limited to to this platform, just from the management standpoint.
And Tom, I think nowadays with most people working from home, there is more flexibility to have meetings at times other than evenings, for example. So normally, I think a lot of people can't get away from their job and want to bunch the meetings up in the evenings, but maybe there's more flexibility. So maybe we try this and see if we can get people to move the meetings around to fit within the two simultaneous meeting capacity.
More generally, is our guidance clear on on the fact that other boards and commissions are not prohibited from meeting? But the recommendation we talked about last time, that we leave it to their discretion, but we strongly encourage that they limit it to critical matters and matters relating to COVID-19, is that is that the guidance that currently exists for boards and commissions, or am I misinformed by myself?
Which is very convincing.
But is that what we are?
Yeah, so we had limited it to Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, any permitting boards that needed to, that needed to meet in order to ensure that they, that projects were not going to be, you know, approved because we did not take any decisions by a certain timeline. And the fourth column is escaping me. But, you know, but it was pretty narrow. And Jim's on the phone, but we had talked about this this morning, that there was a little bit of confusion after the board's last meeting. And so I sent out that clarification so that everybody understood, to all boards and committee members. And we've really not had a whole lot of clamoring for meetings, you know, since that went out. Now, once we have more capability and the ability for more public input, then, you know, I think that's what this board was looking for, in order to open it up and say, look, you now have the ability to meet as you need to. And, you know, you shouldn't meet for the sake of meeting, but to move forward the business of the town, you know, you have that capability now, and the public has an ability to be part of it.
I guess my view is, is that with only the introductory proviso, subject to technical capability, that I would open it up that any board and commission in the town of Southborough is not prohibited from meeting, but that we strongly recommend that they only meet for business they deem critical or time-sensitive, or for matters directly relating to COVID-19. And assume that we're all adults, and that the only meetings that'll be held fall into those categories.
Agreed.
Yep.
Yep.
I agree as well.
But you got to remember too, Marty, you know, you're critical and someone else is critical, are very different.
I understand. I guess, Mark, and this goes very strongly influenced by something Dan said at the last meeting. And that is, that I would rather, I think people are going to be adults about this, and I would rather that our message be that the town of Southborough is open for business. We recognize there are technical issues, and that we are in the midst of a crisis, but we are going to allow other boards and committees the flexibility to make that determination. I think that's important.
Okay.
And I think we've got good people out there on those committees who will make good choices.
Yep. So I will make that motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Shayye?
Heelyye.
Heelyye.
Sounded like roll call unanimous.
I think.
Any other?
Yeah, Tom's putting together the cheat sheet for all the committees as we speak, I'm assuming, so.
Any other topics?
Mark, I would like to know, if you start getting deluged, I'd like to know. And, you know, obviously, we can revisit this, but you know, whether in writing, or I don't think it has to be, but otherwise, really make the message to the boards and committees that we really are going to trust them on this, and that we want that trust to be rewarded.
Absolutely.
Brian?
Yep.
Can I ask one more question?
Yep.
I've been watching some of the stuff going on in the legislature, and there are a number of bills that are sound like they're pending to allow more flexibility. And I And I would, I guess, look to Mark and Town Council, sort of keep an eye on those things to figure out, are there things that we need to act on where we've got a choice or we've got to do something proactively to take advantage of some of the things that are happening to make sure that we don't miss anything that's coming through that pipeline? I'm assuming that Mark and Aldo are watching those things and will get that stuff on our agenda to deal with versus reacting after the fact.
Yeah. And I personally, I think the communication has been excellent from Ms. Dykema as well on this. Agreed. Getting with her daily updates, getting us information. And, you know, quite honestly, I think the House, the Senate, the Secretary of State's office and the governor's office have been, you know, very, you know, understanding of the impact this is all having to municipalities at this time of year with elections and town meetings. And they've been taking actions that have been giving us the, you know, the tools that we need to take action at our local level as well. So it's been, I think, a very cooperative process in a very challenging time.
Very helpful. Agreed.
Yeah, Carolyn's updates have been excellent. So if you read one thing on this per day, you know, her update really synthesizes everything that has come across that day, from updated positives to action in Boston and where the legislature is going on some of these things. So, and you can respond, you can respond to her and she'll respond back to you. You should know that by now, that she's very responsive to that type of thing.
That's a good lead into the election issue, right?
So that's the last thing that I wanted to talk about unless anybody else had something before then?
I do not.
All right.
If it's about the election, I'll go ahead and sign off.
Me as well.
So Mr. Kalenda and Ms. Brascio are at 8:03 PM. Thank you both.
Good night, Lisa. Good night, Dan.
Jim, welcome. I assume you can hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much for joining. I appreciate it.
Hey, Jim.
I will start with a moment of levity. The reason that I'm not using the video is, of all times for this to happen, my hard drive just crashed while calling you on the phone.
There's a lot of that going around, Jim.
Yeah, so, oh, well.
All right. So, uh, local election. The legislature did act as they indicated that they would. They passed legislation yesterday that I presume the governor has signed as well, correct?
Yes.
Giving further information and abilities for municipalities to postpone local elections. And it seems that they've been kind of broad in who they're giving that ability to, be it boards of selectmen or boards of registrars. And I guess, so Jim, I guess I just wanted to touch base with you and just get your thoughts on the election. I see this go on a couple paths, you know, A, we could, you know, do, take the do nothing alternative and continue with the election as scheduled. Alternatively, we could take or utilize the legislation recently passed and implement another election date. And then if that's the path we choose, is it the Board of Selectmen that should be involved in this process, is it should be the Board of Registrars that's involved in this process? So I guess with that as an intro, I'll be curious what your thoughts are, Jim.
Well, there's a couple of other aspects to this legislation. It allows, as you said, either the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Registrars of voters to reschedule the election. And your options could be either board has the same authority to vote to postpone the election at any time and to pick a date at a later time up until June, to reschedule up until June 30. So one doesn't have to say, if one chose to post, if either board chose to postpone the election, they don't have to pick a date at this time. The second thing this does, there's a number of nuances to this, but one thing that they've done is they've relaxed the rules for early voting and for, by mail and absentee voting by mail. And once they get all the nuances of that, I will actually send a communication directly to every resident so that they know exactly how they can do that, go from there. So as far as the details, this is significant as to how the elections are actually run. They still have to be run under the secretary's rules and guidelines, which is kind of interesting. So with that as a bow, I'm sitting here saying, all right, if the election were to be held on May the 12th, then I would be scheduling people right now to work on that. And I can count on two fingers, the number of people in town that would be willing to work at the election on May the 12th and to work under the current guidelines of the Secretary of State. So just picture the last time you went to vote and you had to sit at the, you saw one of the election workers sitting at the end table, less than a foot away from you, to get your information, to put it into the computer, then to hand you a ballot, then to have to deal with the outbound. Nobody is going to work at the election right now under the circumstances right now. So I think it's wise to tell the world right now that I just can't see us, regardless of who makes the decision, that we're not going to be in a position to hold an election on May the 12th. I just think that that's in the form in which the election's held on May the 12th. I'm going to have to try to pull a rabbit out of a hat to do that in a safe fashion as well as in an accurate fashion. I don't quite frankly know how that's going to work out. But, you know, regardless of which board makes the decision, I think it's, I think it's reasonable, my own personal opinion, to tell the world that the election probably shouldn't be held on that date. Now, if I could just digress for two seconds here, I would bet you that you can count on just a couple of hands, the number of people in town that understand what even a Board of Registrars of Voters is. And if I could just take 30 seconds and explain that. Those are four people, three of whom are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, no more than two are Democrats, two are Republicans. And they're the ones that basically the clerk's office works with their authority. They are the ones that are responsible for the registration of voters, certification, nomination papers, administer election recounts and audits, hold hearings on challenges, residents' right to vote. And the members of the board, myself as the clerk, Tom Kirill, Bob Ackley and Tracy Navaroli. And these are very reasonable self-residents and I'm confident that if the selectmen chose that they wanted the registrators to make a fair and reasonable decision, they would be in a position to do that. I have spoken individually with each one of the registrars and just advised them in general terms of legislation. I did not ask them for an opinion. I didn't want to get into any kind of an open meeting law violation. But they're aware of the situation and, you know, we'll see where it goes. So that's sort of setting the table for you. My own personal opinion is that I don't think it's appropriate for us to hold the election on the 12th and let's see what happens after that. I will throw one wrinkle into this, however. Because we, whenever Southborough holds its election, it will fill positions on the Northborough, Southborough Regional School Committee. Southborough and Northborough will have to hold their elections on the same date. So it's my understanding from talking to Northborough's town clerk yesterday, actually today, that their Board of Selectmen will address this at their meeting on April the 13th. So I don't know what their decision would be, but anyway, that's it in a nutshell.
This is Marty. If I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, in terms of our ability to act right now, your view of the legislation, it's my view of the legislation, is that the Board of Selectmen could make the decision tonight to postpone the election to a date to be determined? Is that correct?
Yes, to be determined up until June, has to be held. There are two caveats to that. Your interpretation is correct and that's mirrored by the guidance I've received from the Secretary of State. The election date must be held June 30th or earlier and it must be announced to the public 20 days before the election.
Okay. Well, this is my view and I'm not going to make a motion to this effect right now, but I'm, but I'm prepared to. And that is, obviously, the Board of Registrars would have to meet in order to take action. We're meeting right now. Based on what I hear from the town clerk and sort of common sense, we're not going to have an election on the date currently set. So the Board of Selectmen has the authority to act. I think we should act tonight to let people know that that election date is going to be postponed and that in coordination with the town of Northborough and with the Board of Registrars, a new date will be set likely for sometime in the latter half of June.
Before June 30th to comply with the requirement.
Right, right.
And just confirming, Jim, that could be either on or before June 30th?
That is correct.
And the reason I say that, because if we tried to reschedule election day for a Tuesday and we did it before June 30th, that would push it to June 23rd, which happens to be the last day of school as well. So I don't, now, because we know that June 23rd is set in stone as the last day that school can go until. Typically, there is the eighth grade banquet that's held at Trotter's, so I don't know what kind of an impact there would be at the schools for that. We could certainly hold it on June 30th itself and just hope that, you know, no other disaster hits and complicates that day because that's the last possible day we could have. So just pointing out the issue with the 23rd potentially.
Okay, there's another, there's another wrinkle in here, or consideration here as well. The selectmen have the authority to determine the date of an election, the time and the location. So we're not necessarily wedded to a Tuesday, nor are we necessarily wedded to the gym at Trotter's. I just throw that out there. I don't know, I'm just, I've got some crazy ideas I'm kicking around and I just don't know where it's going to end up. But, and frankly, I don't know that the schools would, what their position would be about allowing the public into their gym under these considerations. So there's a lot of wild cards in play. So I wouldn't be wedded necessarily to a Tuesday for this election, even though that has been the tradition. We're not, it's not required to do that.
No, I hear you. And certainly thinking, you know, presuming at this point that we could even hold it in the Trotter's Gymnasium is speculative in a lot of ways. Who knows where we're going to be with this situation at the end of June? I don't know what else here, well, we can, we can talk later. So I agree with your assessment and Marty's assessment that I think that it is impractical, completely impractical to hold, to think that we're going to hold an election on May 12th as currently scheduled. I guess I would ask, if there was a delay in the, a postponement in the election, does that change people's abilities to pull papers and get papers signed and return papers?
No, I'm glad you mentioned that. The deadline for the ballot, the people appearing on the ballot ended at 5:00 tonight. 16 of the 18 people that had pulled papers have returned and that's it. So these 16 names will appear on the ballot. So I will wait until the deadline to withdraw passes and the same deadline that we've had. So those deadlines don't change irrespective whichever day this is rescheduled to. And then I will order the ballots at that time and they will be dated on May the 12th, regardless of the date of the election. So here's the interesting wrinkle to this. As soon as I get these ballots in, people can request absentee ballots by mail. So it is entirely possible, it is a certainty, that people will be voting by absentee or early voting by mail on these ballots in the middle and end of April for an election that has yet to be scheduled to sometime in June. But that is the way the statute's written and that's the way we're going to proceed to try to convince as many people as possible to utilize the opportunity to vote by mail. Kind of a crazy situation, but there you have it.
All right. So arbitrarily speaking, if June 30th was chosen as the postponed election date, that doesn't reset the calendar for people's abilities to pull and turn in papers? That window is open to closed at this point?
That is correct. The only window that changes is that the voter registration deadline becomes 10 days before the date of the election.
Okay.
Yes, I don't see, we have a lot of choice at this point in terms of, A, postponing and then waiting to Northborough decides, working with them to find a date later and then hoping that the crisis dies down enough that we can do something in June.
So I guess in choosing a rescheduled date, and I guess I'll ask this of Marty and Sam, do you think it ought to be our board that gets involved in that decision? Do you think it ought to be the registrars of voters that gets involved in that decision? Or do you think it's a joint action between the Board of Selectmen in Northborough and Southborough and the clerks and all involved to come up with a date that works for both communities?
Is there any law or regulation that applies to this? I'm not aware of one.
Well, just the one that was just passed that basically uses either of us.
One where the ink is still wet.
I guess my, I guess my reaction is, Brian, that from the town of Southborough perspective, that it just makes sense to have a discussion with the registrars and come to a Southborough, a town of Southborough decision about a proposed date and then have a similar conversation with the town of Northborough. And again, for all of this stuff, just hoping that there are adults in the room and that a very simple process remains very simple.
Hope we can get it done by the end of June.
So that with all this, I guess I now will move that the Board of Selectmen act to postpone the May 12th town election to a date to be determined in conjunction with both the Board of Registrars and with the town of Northborough, set election to take place on or before June 30th, 2020.
Second.
So moved in second. And before we vote, Jim, let me just ask you one question. Because you had mentioned that Northborough is going to discuss this on April 13th?
That is, that's the information I received this morning, yeah.
But there is no guarantee, now I have to presume that everybody involved is adults here. I would have to presume that Northborough is going to come to the same conclusion that we are, that holding an election on May 12th is impractical. But there remains the possibility that they don't. And on April 13th, they could say, all systems go, we're going to move forward on May 12th, correct? Is that an option for the Northborough?
Well, yeah, and I would just add some color to that. The Northborough town offices are still open. They didn't shut down the way we have, at least as of this morning.
But Jim, if we have postponed our election from May 12th, they really can't have an election on May 12th unless the requirement that we have an election on the same day isn't really required.
Yeah, Marty, I'll check tomorrow with the Secretary of State's office to see whether that is in fact a legal requirement. That has been the tradition here and I don't know. It may come back to the agreement between the towns with the regional school agreement. I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Does it really matter if Northborough, let's say, elects their representative to the regional school committee and that person takes office May 12th or 13th and we don't do it till middle of June and our new person takes office? Until that point, is that a problem?
Except, don't we vote for both?
We.
Yeah, we vote for both. You know, I, as Marty said earlier, adults in the room will come to a reasonable decision on this. I'm sure when I get guidance from the Secretary of State and looking at the agreement on this, we'll kind of figure it out. As to whether who assumes office or not first, I, you know.
Yeah, it sounds like they'll take their office.
Yeah, yeah, we'll figure this out.
Two chairs.
In respect of though, I believe that it is the right thing for us to do, knowing the limitations we're going to have to be able to staff the elections and hold, and then hold them safely. The correct thing for us to do is to postpone.
Yeah, safe for staff and citizens. We don't want to do something that affects.
Absolutely. That would be my recommendation.
All right, that's my, I'm not changing my motion.
Yeah, the motion was made. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor? Shayye?
Diver's eye.
Okay, so we are, postpone the election. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your input. It's been very helpful.
Okay, have a good night, folks.
All right. With that, if there are any adjournments?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved seconded. All those in favor of adjourned? Shayye?
Diver's eye.
Eeyi.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Stay safe. Social distance.
Good night, everybody. Good night. Thank you.